Hey team, can you hear me? I just wanted to check my sound.
Mr. Markley, we can hear you.
Thank you for thanks.
Yeah. How did you manage the topic? It's not there yet. The link that they sent the PowerPoint. Not working, but I'll figure it out.
Good evening, everyone. Today is August tenth, twenty twenty-three. This will be a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Before I call the meeting into order, I want to announce that we have individuals participating remotely as well as on-site. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones, please, when not speaking to avoid any background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is participating knows exactly who is speaking. This is critical given the number of remote participants and its current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. Please make sure that while you speak that you're speaking clearly and directly into the microphone. Add a tone to ensure that your comments are being heard and an accurate record of your comments is being made for the clerk. I'll now call this meeting to order. Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening. You are hereby notified that I've called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted in a hybrid format on Thursday, August tenth, twenty twenty-three at five P M. In the commission chambers located on the lobby level of the municipal office building for the presentation of the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Before I call roll, I want to make note that Commissioner Townsend does have an absence memo. Commissioner, roll call, Commissioner Markley.
Here.
Stites. Davis.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
McKernan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Garner.
Here. Thank you, clerk. Again, this evening we have a presentation of the twenty twenty-four proposed budget from our county administrator, Mr. David Johnson. I'll recognize him and allow him to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Count and Commission. I want to. This is, this is exciting for me because this is the first budget that I presented to you. Recommendation and. When I started this position on March twenty-seventh and in the first month to get my, my legs under me, we were looking at the, at the budget numbers with Reggie and the finance team and kind of got a little alarmed. What we presented to you in mid-May is the general fund of city general fund and in twenty twenty-six, you see all that red numbers and that's not good numbers. It showed that we had a net change in one year of twenty-four million dollars. We had a ending balance of minus twenty-three million dollars and no general fund reserves. And as we presented that to you, set the alarms that, you know, not only is that not good news, that sets a lot of other things in motion like state action against the, the city. And I swore then that's not going to happen under my watch. And so that kind of drove us to do a lot of work internally. We did lose about two and a half months of our budget process from when I got hired. So this isn't the deep dive budget, but I did walk away and was committed in our first meeting when we unveiled this, that there are two goals that I want to accomplish this, this, this budget session is to erase that proposed ten point seven million dollar deficit and buy us time. Instead of twenty twenty-six, if there's things that we can do that can push that date of concern out a year or two, that was our goal because that gives us the time to do the deep dives, deal with structural deficits, deficits, new ways of thinking, new approaches to government, more efficiencies, all that in two to three years. What you see here on the sec, on the bottom chart is we were successful and for, for a couple reasons and Reggie will talk more about that. But we, we still have net changes in deficit. But we have, we are still drawing from the reserves. We somehow miraculously got to our reserve above sixteen point seven percent, which is the minimum standard for Gatsby, that we should be our floor. But we still then look at twenty twenty-eight as starting to see concerns. And therefore, whatever steps we took this year helps us make adjustments over the next year so we can continually push out what we're seeing in twenty twenty-eight with our reserves going below sixteen percent to eventually be able to erase that. Well, at that same night, we showed you the county side. And we were not that concerned about the county side because we were looking at our reserves above the sixteen point seven percent level. And but over time since that date until August seventh, when we published this internally, some things changed that affected the county budget that shows a little concern where the reserves are below sixteen percent. And toward the end in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you see an uptick, which is good. But it's not the above sixteen point seven percent that we showed you a few weeks ago. The reasons for that, we assumed one lar- a large expenditure that was not budgeted and therefore was not included in the model. And that was the parity for deputies. That was a large, large item that we had to incorporate into the expense side of the budget. On the revenue side of the budget, what became revealed to us over during this time was we saw that there is a reduction in number of new car sales made in the county. And that means our licensed tag revenue was significantly dropped because that's basically a property tax. And therefore, lower depreciated cars of people were paying the, the tax instead of paying it on newer vehicles. So when you looked at those two things together, it contributed to the change of that landscape that we talked about in May. And this is our, our current picture and you know, it's still concerning. We still have to do deep dives on the counting side. We will be working with constitutional officers about that. But it's, it's, it's hand, it's manageable. So in just a couple months, the alarms of this city government are lower. And we have a little more concern on the county side, but it's not devastating. So with that type of information, we want to highlight some of the things that we've done, what we include in the budget. And then we will be available to, to have a discussion after that. So Reggie, would you like to take over?
Thank you, County Administrator Johnston. Good evening, everyone. Our twenty twenty-four budget of four, is a four hundred sixty-six million dollar budget. Last year was a four hundred thirty-two million dollar budget, which is about a thirty-three million dollar increase this year, and that equates to about seven percent. Twenty twenty-four revenue sources are, for all the city funds are about three hundred forty-five million dollars. And then just for the city, city general fund for itself, the revenue coming there is a hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. City general fund kind of breaking down into the expenses. We have like a hundred and seventy-nine point nine million dollar budget. We did just see where the revenues are a hundred and seventy-nine point two million. So we do have a structural imbalance of like eight hundred thousand dollars, but we're really close, hadn't been this close in a while. With the expenditures by functional area, public safety is our largest expense at sixty-nine percent. And then community services, also our largest expense in the functional areas. Expenditure costs by categories, personnel is our largest expense over there at seventy-four percent. Then our contractual services at eleven percent. On the county side, all county funds are bringing in about a hundred and eleven million dollars for twenty twenty-four. County general fund itself is bringing in eighty-two million dollars. On the expense side, county general fund, we expect eighty-four million dollars to be going out the door. That's about four million dollars more than last year. And we can see biggest cost over there is personnel at sixty-six percent in the category side and then on the public's, or on the functional area side, public safety is the largest expense at fifty-seven percent. So some of the capital projects that we have in this year's are in the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. Over in parks, we have a rock wall replacement that would happen at Wyandotte County Lake. Also, we have a Korean Vietnam Veteran War Memorial that will be restored. And then we have a beautification program that will continue this year. Also, facility-wise, we have in capital projects or we have a new community care center, which will provide wraparound services for the less fortunate members in our community. And then we're also planning a new west patrol, which will cost ten million dollars or what we set aside the budget. And then we will replace Fire Station Twenty, which is about nine point eight million dollars. And then also Memorial Hall renovations to help us get ready for World Cup and also make it a a venue to replace Rear Center. So we have one point one million dollars in the budget for that. Infrastructure-wise, we were able to commit to twenty-five percent more in street preservation this year as the commission wanted last year and also this year and want to do every year until we get our pavement preservation score up. So we, we were able to go from eight and a half million dollars last year or for this current year to where we'll add almost eleven or have eleven million dollars in twenty twenty-four. And then we also do have funding in our, our budget for Kansas Avenue Bridge where we'll start planning for it and also funding for it for the bridge, even if we don't get a grant to match the funding for the Kansas Mega Grant. We, we have a total of thirty million dollars in the budget across a few years. Economic development-wise, Rock Island Bridge projects that we committed to, we have three million dollars in the budget for those, get those paid for. And then we have different funding just to help us get ready for the World Cup coming up twenty twenty-six. Technology-wise, Parks and Rec is getting a new asset management system to help them better track their assets and body camera support across the organization with us getting body cameras. We have some departments as police and district attorney where they have digitized that information. So storage for that costs, costs money. So we have three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in the budget for that. Then we have funding in, in the budget to replace the public media broadcast system. And then also we have a human services department. That's a client management system that they're going to implement to help them deal with their clients on a more efficient basis and be able to deal with more clients. Also, across capital projects, we did reduce debt for twenty twenty-four. So we traditionally been issuing like twenty million dollars in debt. So in twenty, twenty twenty-four, we will issue seventeen million dollars of debt as opposed to this year, like we have twenty million dollars in debt. So debt has gone down. The next few years, we do have the Kansas Avenue Bridge in the budget. So we do creep up over that twenty million dollar mark. But when we get out to twenty twenty-eight, we are down to eleven million dollars in debt. So some of the things that we happen to budget that directly impact the community, most things that do directly affect the community, but some things that commission that you all spoke to us about and wanted to make sure citizens were impacted with Commissioner Bynum about law for the BPU pilot committee. So one of the things that came out there is to expand the utility and sales tax rebate program eligibility for senior citizen relive, leave. So one of the things we'll be able to do there is put that, implement that program so that citizens can get a relief on their BPU pilot bills and also taxes, their sales taxes that they pay. So we have funding in the budget for that. And then also something Commissioner Stice brought forward last year, the county initiative for funding infrastructure. We have, that has become its own fund in the budget. And what we did was move a mill from the county general fund to start this new fund, which will be about two million dollars. And so citizens in Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and Kansas City, Kansas will be impacted by this. Some things we have done in personnel. We, we went through the budget and eliminated twelve infill positions. This is a process that won't just happen within the budget process, but it's just something we have a meeting that we'll be having every month where we'll be eliminating positions as needed. And then we're also moving personnel costs from special funds that we have. So we have special funds like special street highway fund. We also have special street or special parks fund. So we were paying people out of those funds. So now what we're going to do is move people out of those funds and back to the, to the general funds and also to funds where their cost should be coming from so that we can pay for things like projects out of those. So we don't have to issue debt on some projects. Also, we'll be proposing to, to fund strategic positions across the organization, which will be key to our success. Some of those positions include economic development. We'll have two new managers there that came from existing pens and then in the county administrators office, there'll be a new internal intergovernmental affairs division and then a municipal court. We had, we had a person that was being paid by a partial grant. So we'll make that person a full-time position so they can continue helping municipal court reduce fines and fees for the citizens. So over in parks, one thing that we did, did do is we increased the transfer from the city general fund, which is something new that we're doing where we want to benchmark the transfer they get to the city revenues. So they ended up getting like four hundred sixty thousand more dollars over in the city, over in the consolidated parks fund. And then continue to have investment in park maintenance and infrastructure. Just a number of things going over in, on their parks where also they will have a million dollar worth of grant funding coming in to help with projects that they have that they need to get going. Over in the fire department, we're going to staff Station Fifteen in Fairfax with nine additional permanent F T E. And that would eliminate employees working overtime to fill that station. Also, we do have safer grant that is coming to an end. And we will take those eighteen F T E and pay them out of the city, city general fund. Also, we will open our new fire station in Turner this year.
I'm sorry, Richie, if you could just speak in the microphone, I guess the public, we've been notified, can't hear you clearly. So.
All right. So we will open a new fire station that is now under construction in Turner. Also, we will start construction on a new fire station twenty, which the current fire station is located at Seventy-Eighth and Kansas Avenue now. And then also within the equipment capital budget, we do have three additional fire apparatus on top of the regular replacement schedule for apparatus within the budget. Just recently, Chief Rubin had to take some vehicles or some apparatus out of service. So we're getting these three additional fire apparatus to help with the aging fleet. Over in the police department, I did mention this earlier, but we do have money in the budget to move forward with a new west patrol station to start the process of studying that and also acquiring land. And then also later this year, we will break ground on C S I lab. And then also for the police department, we are replacing their whole fleet of vehicles for detectives and also patrol vehicles. Also, one of the things going on within our budget is over the years since we went through COVID, we got CARES Act funding and also we got ARPA funding. So one of the things is we had, we were able to depend on that money. So slowly we're happening, happening to transition those that funding back over to our certified funds. So one of those departments that we have impact there is transportation, our transit services. And so we do have individuals that we are starting to pay out of city general fund and moving them from the CARES Act funding and the ARPA funding. And then also we'll be working with the health department over the next few years to move positions that they have from COVID relief money over into their fund or deciding if we still need those positions. That's the information that we wanted to present this day.
Before you ask questions, also want to let you know about some things, you know, we've heard you, I mean, ever since I've been hired here, you've had the discussion debates, whatever you want to call it, on pilot reduction, revenue neutral. We need to do deep dives in the operations of our departments to create efficiencies, create a new attitude of customer service first. We've heard about the need to prioritize each department's services, monetize them. Because if and when we have discussions on pilot reduction, revenue neutral, that may impact our revenue stream, it impacts the services we can provide. And for us to talk about what type of actions you want to take, if it cuts our revenue stream, you're going to be asked to approve cuts to services. And we can only do that if we do that. So I'm just saying is that we got to have a longer discussion about the impacts of these options that you're going to be weighing over the next year or two. Because you all are hearing about the cost of government to our citizens. And the only way we can help you make the best, most informed decision is to provide you with the best information that we can glean to have before you. So the we're going to have an interesting next couple of years for discussions and decision-making. And even internally from the staff side is that we may be having to do things differently than we're used to. I think the one attitude that we're starting to get across within our staff of our, of our local government, the U G, is the fact, this isn't their money. It's not my money. It's not your money. It's the people's money. And they entrusted to us to use wisely. Now, what does that mean? That comes through discussion and debate and a decision eventually from you of what that is as the local elected representatives. So that's, we have to have an attitude of public service first. That's what government is to do, provide services to our citizens. And therefore we need to, and I'll lead that process with our staff to get that focus in, inside all of us. And again, it's not a department's money. It's not the administrator's money. This may be a recommended budget from the administrator, but eventually it's going to be your budget saying how we're going to provide and fund services to our citizens. So everything's geared toward public service to our citizens. That's what we're supposed to be doing. And just like every organization, we have to examine ourselves, make necessary changes to, to benefit that focus. And I think we're setting the stage for that because once this budget, a budget gets passed, a balanced budget gets passed, that That um, we can then start doing those deep dives into our. Uh, UG government, both county and the city side. And uh, make it be better. Make it be more effective. And again, make it toward the citizen. So, do you have anything to add? So that's just the overall of our budget. You received your budget books. Um, we have two sessions scheduled. Right? Next two Thursdays. Um, for you to, uh, after you've had the wonderful opportunity to read all those numbers. Uh, bring back your questions, your ideas. We're, we're going to ask you if you have any questions here tonight, but continue that dialogue. That when we get to uh the opportunity to uh. Your responsibility of passing a budget. You've had the forums necessary to seek the information that's important for you. So, Mr. Mayor, turn it back to you folks, please.
Thank you, Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay, for that presentation. Um, we will now open up for questions. I believe we have a question from Commissioner Kane.
Thank you, Mayor. That's pretty short, blunt and brief, and I appreciate it, but I do have some questions. One, are we voting on the budget August thirty-first?
That is when it's scheduled.
Okay. And then where is West Patrol going to be?
We have not identified that yet.
Okay, well, we can talk about that. And then I, I think the lake wall is way too expensive. I think we should go out and get some other bids for that. And then I guess my biggest question is, have we hired a grant writer yet?
Appreciate you asked that question. Let's talk about the economic development or the inter, intergovernmental affairs office. Um, intend to hire a director and hire an intergovernmental affairs coordinator. Uh, right now we have a lot of departments doing their own thing. We don't know what that is. And therefore we will coordinate a focused intergovernmental relations effort. So it's coordinated and we can give regular reports to you, to the public. On our interactions with state federal agencies, state and federal elected delegations and our neighbors in the region. We don't have that coordination now. That's important. Also on that is where we're going to put the grant writers. Is because again, those grants go to other government agencies. And therefore the departmental grants will be funneled through those grant writers. If we still use grant writers in the departments. That's what that coordinator is to do, is to coordinate that grant activity within the department. So we have, so we know what's going on, number one. And that the message that we send to our agencies are consistent to the priorities of. The commission as understood by the administrator. So if that answers your question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. More of a comment than question, just thank you for what you're doing and the hard work. Um. There's a will, there's a way. Uh, and so you've shown that there is a way for us to get through this. You've helped us get through this. I really do appreciate the, your experience and the knowledge that you bring to us. Um, and helping us stabilize before we can have, as you mentioned, those tough discussions of. Of sources of revenue that may be cut. So I, I thank you for helping us stabilize before we can actually have those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And to uh Mr. Johnson and your staff, thank you for this presentation tonight. A few weeks ago, we had a meeting with the uh BPU Board of Directors. Uh, and um, we talked about a proposed windfall. Somewhere I heard the numbers, I think was about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As relates to increased fees that they would be charging. Um, I don't know if that, that number or that consideration has been, been incorporated into this. Proposed budget first. So I'm, I'm asking that. That's the first question.
If the increased revenue uh because of their rate increases to the pilot are included, is that your question?
I don't think it was pilot related. It was, was it? Yeah. Okay. It was pilot related.
Thank you for your clarification. But, yes. How much? Seven hundred and twenty thousand.
Is included.
Yes, it is.
I, one of the thoughts that was presented to me was that perhaps we could use those funds as utility relief. Um, I don't think that I had a direct conversation with you or um, or Mr. Um. It's Reggie. I'm calling you Reggie this time, um, about that. But um, is that something that could be moved over? I think I saw a number of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on what you were talking about, Commissioner Bynum. Is there any way that that seven hundred and fifty thousand or at least a portion of it? Can be included in that amount of, that we can use for utility assistance?
That type of ask needs to be part of a bigger discussion. Because. That seven hundred thousand dollars is incorporated in our operating budget that is today. And if you looked at, if you remember looking at um the reserves that we have. Uh, at the city side, it's still not where it should be, under sixteen percent. And it's that type of discussion that we need to have with you before uh having. Direction on pilots, direction and using revenue generated by the public or by, by the pilot for. Uh, relief options. And we really haven't had that discussion about. Discussions that I've witnessed is we want to do these things without the consequences of doing those things. And you really need to have that total discussion before you, so you can weigh what direction you want to go as a, as a commission.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that. Um, and I don't know that we have enough time between now and the time we can vote on this to, to uh make that adjustment. But it is something that I think that we should, I don't know how it's going to play out over the next few years. So maybe I better just wait. In terms of my comments to see how this plays out. So anyway, thank you for the dialogue.
We've heard about you and waiting for your comments, and they become. But that, that, that's, you know, as, as I said earlier, anything to deal with. Um, relieving us, relieving the citizens from the pilot, relieving. Uh, of tax burdens about mill reduction or, or freezing the mill rate. And all that really needs to have a, a, a deeper discussion. And like I said, we, we lost two and a half months of the budget process with my hiring. At the end of March, we can start having those discussions. Um, after the dust settles, when this is passed and put to bed.
It's so. Did, did we, are we including um? Money for the hiring of persons in the economic development department?
Yes, there's.
Was that in the presentation?
That we. We didn't tell you what we were doing, but yes, it was in there. Right now, we're starting off with three people. Um, one of, I have a vacant um assistant county administrator. It's going to be solely for economic development. That person will be responsible for related departments under, uh, that exist today. Um, as well as guide to, right now, two economic development managers. One for economic development, two uh and get an idea of uh greenfield development. I mean, that's, that's in, in economic development is, they say that's kind of like the easiest economic development. Cause people can put whatever they want for the first time on flat field, not contaminated.
Right.
They can build what they want. Now, the other person will be charged on what's called. Urban redevelopment. And redevelopment is viewed as quite more challenging than greenfield development. Because you're dealing with an already built-out landscape. You're dealing with buildings that may need to be repurposed. Sometimes it's not in the best part of town and therefore you have to have different type of. Uh, encouraging different investment strategies, different incentive programs and the like. So they're two different uh folk I. And those are uh need different skill sets. Uh, and as you know, we've, we've heard just in my time here, it predates me. There's a different economic um climate east of six thirty-five than there is on west of six thirty-five.
Yeah, I, I hope our, I hope our, our constituents, our taxpayers are hearing this portion. Cause there's a lot of conversation about we need more economic development east of, and six thirty-five and hey, I'm a champion for that myself. But it, and the community needs to know it is a far more challenging experience to do true redevelopment. And we have to deal with things such as gentrification and, and the whole list goes on and on. And I'm not going to belabor the time. But uh, I do appreciate the fact that we are going to have at least someone, hopefully within the next six to twelve months that we'll be focusing on that.
You know, to ask for an investor to come in. They're going to look at one thing, what's my return on investment? And when you're in, let's say, the west side of our community. They don't have the issues that exist here in the east side. Where we have to deal with um what poverty does to an economic climate. Can I get a ROI because that's around? Um, what do, how, how can I repurpose property? To create an environment, economic environment for my business to succeed in an old part of town? Then I could build new somewhere else. Um, you can't just say, ask investors to come and they'll invest. They're going to ask the tough questions. Can I succeed and get my return? And it's quite a challenge in an older urban area to do that for redevelopment as it is. You know, out east or out west. So it's uh, we need different skill sets.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you. A couple of questions. The presentation that you've made tonight and the budget that you've. That you've built as our starting point, if you will, is built at the current mill levy rates. Is that correct?
That's true. Yes.
The first and second slides, is there any way to get the presentation back? And um. Those detailed slides at the very front end. There, that one. Um. Ultimately, what I'm trying to ask is, I would appreciate. At some point, and it looks like, I'm assuming the five o'clock next Thursday, the seventeenth is a budget workshop.
The next two Thursdays are.
Okay. So what I would appreciate at some point is. An analysis of what you all accomplished to take us from. The bleakness of what it looked like to where you brought us. You know, I would like to know what were, what are the differentials? What changed? What did you do? Um, and I would just like to know that in more detail than, than what's here. Um, that's, that's just a question for later, but I guess the question is, can we know more? About that than we've been given tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
The slide where we show the. Utility and sales tax rebates, and I think you had two hundred and fifty thousand budgeted and um. I just want to clarify. What I heard you say tonight. It says expand utility and sales tax rebate program for citizen relief on BPU pilot and taxes. And I don't know exactly what that means. Um, cause the pilot, I thought I heard you tell me administrator yesterday. That we, that you did not build any level of pirate le- pilot, pilot relief. And no pirates either into the budget. But that you did build in this effort to change these ordinances around the. Utility and sales tax rebates that we've been working through the standing committee to the full commission.
Right. And Reginald was part of that. And uh, what we heard was, well, when we looked at that program. And uh, I think what's proposed is having a wider audience of eligibility. And uh, and then uh, income change. It's, it's higher. That past qualification. Um, when we worked with uh staff, um, the existing level of people. Using the existing system or program is around a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five thousand. And if you added all those who are eligible, it'd be five million dollars.
Right.
And therefore we thought we'd start it by increasing from one forty-five to two fifty. If that's not enough, we have to come back with an amendment.
And I appreciate that and support it, obviously. And the clarity I want is that is for utility and sales tax rebates only. And nothing on the pilot relief program that we brought forward, correct?
That is to make the uh sales tax and utility rebate um more so like the Homestead Act.
Right. And the third leg of that stool was that same target population would also qualify for zero pilot. But that is not included here. That's what I'm trying to get us.
No, that is not.
Say out loud. Okay. And, and, and I'll make a comment for. Uh, discussion as we move through the month of August and I, and I'll only say this. Um, Mayor asked me to lead that effort, which I was very happy to do. A specific request was that we look at that most vulnerable population, which we did. On May eighteenth, when we brought that proposal forward. I really felt like the general consensus of the commission was to support it. So I understand if we're going to try to incorporate it. Then as you say, Administrator, that's a dollar that comes out of the general fund. You know, that's a dollar we don't have to spend. So I totally understand it. Just asking that maybe we take an opportunity as we continue discussing this budget. To look at that again. And, and again, what would we not do if we do that? Cause I think that's part of the, part of the challenge that we face. And really that, I'll just leave it there for now unless you wanted to add something.
Commission has every right to, this is your budget eventually, and you have every right to craft it how you see fit. What I presented today was a balanced budget.
Right.
If there is going to be requests for more, I am going to say, remember, I started with a balanced budget. I need something back.
Right.
And therefore the direction of what to not do or to cut. Is a partnership, a dialogue that we have.
Okay.
And we leave uh before it, your vote is taken with an understanding. That you've been involved in that decision of what you're not going, what we're not going to do to make up for an increased ask.
Okay. And, and I think that's the very same answer to my next comment, which is. Is it also possible during this coming time, before we adopt the budget? For us to have a conversation among staff and the governing body. About what a revenue neutral budget would look like. Because again, it's that same discussion. That, that you just pointed out to us. We would have to be having that hard conversation about what will we not do? What cuts will we make? And I'm just, I'm kind of asking you and the commission in general. Can we, or, or even if it's not a revenue neutral conversation, a conversation about some level of. Reduction in city mill levy, county mill levy, whatever we all think we can tolerate, just asking for that.
Um. You can do whatever you want. That's an important part of democracy. Uh, and um, but I, I'm just going to uh remind you is when. remind you is when we had the revenue neutral discussion before you a few weeks ago. Um the swing of a revenue neutral budget was six million dollars more to be cut out of the general fund. Now, if that's still a, a desire, I have to come up with you saying there's six million dollars of options that we're not going to include in.
And that's my point, and if we could meet in the middle somewhere and say what you've brought us is at the current mill levy rates. And here's what, as you say, here's the six million dollar swing, and if we chose two mills off the city, two mills off the county, what's that look like? That's what I'm interested in.
That's fine, we're also going to revisit that because it's going to affect your reserve balance and affect oh, some of that stuff may be accelerated in an earlier year. So that's why having a deeper discussion is very important instead of saying, I want to change two mill rates.
Well, thank you, I, I really appreciate the conversation and the, and I look forward to you know, additional conversation, but I am, I am intensely interested in how did you take us from here to here?
Sure.
I would like the detail on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Administrator, thank you for listening to the commission. There was things up there that members of the commission have been expressing for a while and Reggie, I appreciate your overview. I know this hasn't been easy for staff. When you watch a commission work to address the needs, not only in their particular districts, but all the community. With that, I, I go back to, I, I hope that this falls parallel with Commissioner Bynum's comment in reference to revenue neutral. The challenges that we would have in identifying where we could make those cuts to make revenue neutral work. The, the point that I would like to bring up is I know that our budget has to be stated by state statute. Those things that we have to do, ordinance and resolution, those are the guiding principles of our initial budget, and then we have our needs. And then we have the wants. And those needs and wants are going to be the part that we have to really work on because we have very little control on the other aspect. But the question I would have is, I, I have advocated and requested for a while uh an overview of the monies that are going out to our not-for-profit entities that comes from the unified government collectively and the taxpayers. I don't know what kind of sum that is, but it may help us with that sum to identify the needs and the wants and see where we can help or what we may have to reconsider when it comes to those things that we call our sacred cows that we want to protect. But I think if we start with a figure that we know is the basis for those funds being dispersed, it would be a benefit for some of us to, to help in guiding how we can help the community collectively, not only with their funding, but with the entire budget. So I would hope that as we move forward, we get that sum so that we can identify.
That's an important ask, like Commissioner Bynum has asked for scenarios. We can gather uh if not the entire list, a good list to start the discussion.
Thank you, and I'm not, I know we, we need to do a deep dive, but I must say for the first few months you've been here to come forward with the uh skill that you did and pushing this budget out a little bit. Uh I sincerely appreciate it, and I do hope that staff and community understand that it's not easy coming in and starting from scratch and with, with what you had, but I'm, I'm pleased and optimistic that we're going to be able to work through this collectively and do what is best for the community. So thank you for the basis in which and the blueprint to work from.
Uh both uh Commissioner Bynum and you, Commissioner Burrows, asked, right? What, what did we do? There were some adjustments within, but I, I'm going to be truth in advertising here. It was a lot of increased revenue that helped us immensely. The increased revenue and property taxes because of the um reassessment. And uh to a point, the seven hundred thousand dollars from the increased uh pilot revenue due to BPU's rate hikes. They happened during our analysis or our, our process. And um with the direction that we received during the uh previous budget uh uh discussions that we had, we went with uh a regular note, we, we didn't do revenue neutral, we went regular. And um that's incorporated, that's an increase in revenue. And then BPU raised their rates, and then all of a sudden, it's an algebraic equation, we benefit. That's incorporated in there. So to be truth in advertising, that helped a lot. But also working with our staff helped as well because they forego stuff. They delayed stuff, they um, we, we got rid of uh positions that were on the books that weren't being filled. So uh we'll get you though a, a detailed list on that. But I'm not a savior. Um it, it's, we, we work with uh things within our control and take advantage of those that aren't in, under our control, but also be upfront and open about it with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrows and Administrator, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the fact that you were completely candid with us. And I agree um that we are, you and we are not saviors, that's something that uh I would walk and talk that, that language because that's what's needed. With that said, I recant my request uh to, to increase the amount of uh of the utility relief. When you said it, the way that you said it, it made absolute sense. And I understand that we've, we're in this time, what I, what I can appreciate is that you're not trying to hide anything from us. Because we can, those of us know that know this language, we can manipulate numbers just about any kind of way. But what I like here is this is a candid look of where we are and how we're going to improve over the next one, five years. Um so I appreciate that because at least we now know. Um and we're not surprised and no one should be, you know, feeling like the rule has been pulled over our heads. We, we know that this is what it's going to look like. Hopefully, we can beat the budget. Hopefully, uh but we'll see. So I regret, I recant my request. Thank you, Mayor.
So we'll add that to the list, okay, Commissioner? Uh but that, that goes to a, a saying that I was brought up with, and I think we all heard it before. Figures don't lie, but liars figure. You know, you're not going to get a liar at this podium or in this gallery. Um we'll be upfront and honest with you. So again, our goal is to help you make the best, most informed decision to benefit our citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stikes.
Stikes District Seven. Well, I can appreciate that uh it was made easier because of the evaluations or bringing in more money than they did last year. And that BPU raised their rates. Well, that all comes on the backs of our taxpayers. And as we all know that they're hurting, right, they've asked, I mean, I, I, I go to every, every event that I attend. They ask, what are we doing about our high taxes, right? We have to get control. And I understand you're, you're here on, you, you just got here, and I appreciate what you've done already, right? Um and and I think that what I can get behind is giving you a pass this year. Right? To look at the deep dive that is required for us to get back into um because it's, it's not going to matter if we don't, if, if rates continue to go up with BPU and our evaluations continue to go up because we won't have people living here to pay those rates. They'll be out of here. Um economic development. I am, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're going to address that because I think from day one that you've got here. You've said economic development is how we get out of this mess. We cannot continue to slow down, prohibit developers that are trying to get permits. They're in, are coming to our city right now, trying to, trying to build. And they get slowed down, they get road blocked. Uh and I'm not talking about just from on the west side, I'm talking about across this whole county. I've gotten, I, I, I mentioned to one to you tonight before uh the meeting, it's not in my district, it's having the same issue. And if, and if we're going to run folks away, or if we're not going to be customer friendly, they're going to go elsewhere. We gotta address that, and I, and I think that you are, and I appreciate that. The West Patrol, um the new West Patrol, I was glad to hear that we're looking at uh getting police cars. New fleet for the police officers, they're driving, they're driving crap right now. They're, they're expected to go out there and drive around and, and go call to call and protect us and serve. And they're driving things that I think that we should be embarrassed that they're driving. And not only the, the way they look, but the safety of our officers. Um on August second, we had a meeting on the ninth floor with the um, the, the developer and the folks for the uh Legends. And there was a discussion that day, and I brought it up about what does it look like? I worked out of West Patrol for many, many years, as a police officer. And West Patrol is a, is terrible, small, outdated, it's not, it's not good anymore. Um, well, I said, what was the possibility that we move that out to the Legends? She said, I would love, I would love to have you guys out there, I'd love to have, we have a space for you. I don't know if she does or if she, if she doesn't, I have no idea, right? But, but maybe there's, there's, there's a ten million dollar save, we're not going to be in that for free. But then it puts us in a shopping center, more West Patrol, West area of ours, of our county that uh that presence is needed uh as development continues to grow. Um so I'd like to see how we, and as Commissioner Kane mentioned, um to, I think it was to Reggie uh when he said we can discuss that later about West Patrol, the location, that's, that, that would be something that I would be uh in favor of looking into to see how maybe we could look at West Patrol uh being incorporated into the actual footprint of the Legends Shopping Center. I think there's a lot of good reasons that it makes sense for it to be there. Again, I look forward to the next two uh uh discussions. I do, I am looking forward to seeing what it looks like to see what we can do on mill reduction. On one or both or um you know, just, I just want to see what it looks like, how, can we do it? Can we do it? There wants, the needs, everybody's talked about it. We've discussed it, how can we do it? What services go away? If we are to uh have tax relief, so I look forward to it, thank you very much. Good job.
Any other commissioners? Okay, uh thank you Administrator, thank you, Mr. Lindsay, thank you to the entire staff for your presentation. Um I think uh what we'll find commission is, is what we recognized early on when we brought uh uh our new county administrator in, he does have um, he's very experienced, well-versed, knowledgeable uh in finance as well as economic development, and those are some of the things that uh that we've all shared, um I've talked about it is uh number one, we've got to look at economic development to broaden our task, tax base. To shore up some of our shortfalls, but then we also need to make sure that we're operating um in a way that is more fiscally responsible. Um in a way that also um aligns with um providing the essential services that um our residents have come to expect um and in some areas demand, and do that equitably. And what you'd find in Mr. Johnson, and I know that was mentioned tonight, is he's going to be transparent, he's going to be truthful, he's going to give you all the options that you ask for. And he's going to help you get to the right decision, hopefully that will be the best choice um as you make your informed decision. To improve the quality of life for all those who call wind that county home. What is promising um from his expertise, uh one thing that stood out. Um and I know he said that uh he found the extra money, but uh he didn't hide that money, he didn't put it somewhere else. He applied that money to give this commission uh more opportunities from the twenty twenty-six uh red bankrupt, whatever you want to call it, um uh timeline and push that out to twenty twenty-eight, and so um as our administrator has said, he wants to make sure that under his watch that we never get to the point of where this county and this town ever has on its record that we went bankrupt, and he is committed to that. I know that his staff, our unified government staff is committed to that, they're working hard, um not only to get the best budget, but to find the efficiencies and cost savings that we all um know that we have to have uh within this unified government. So thank you, thank you to all your staff. We have one more question, Commissioner Davis.
Sorry, Mayor, thank you. Uh just very, very quickly, um thank you all for this, this is, this is massive, and I'll probably have some other questions. One of the kind of things that I wanted to get clarity on. We have all thirteen unions that U G works with under contract that is also included in this budget, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Which is very, very important for our non-union employees, what are we looking at as far as a cost of living adjustment?
We included a four percent COLA for non-union.
Okay, gotcha, so.
And it mirrors what CBAs include.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Awesome. Um and then kind of last question, I'll save other questions for other times. When do we, by state law, need to adopt this budget? Cause we had some confusion last year on what the state dictated to us. I know there's a plan for later on this month, but what's the exact date?
So we, we have to have state forms to the state by like September thirtieth. So I mean, we would, we have to get those state forms together and everything, so it'd be nice to, like two weeks out from that.
Gotcha, so that, I'm assuming you're saying that the first commission meeting of September would be the, the deadline, pretty much the ideal deadline, to get it done.
So on, on the last year, we did it by, I think, September fifteenth.
Yeah, so around that time. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Just wanted to make sure because there was some, at least I had some confusion uh last year. Well, again, um thank you all to our staff, uh the, the last thing I'll say is whatever we do, we have to show our constituents what they are getting out of this. If this means uh we're not going to see a dramatic uh reduction in property taxes, which we talk about reduction in property taxes, we are only forty-six percent of that. We have other taxing jurisdictions that are having this conversation, and they may not even be considering lowering the mill rate. And so the impact for our residents, we really have to think about what the overall impact is going to be. But um if that's not going to be of top priority, then pointing to, even if we can get a district by district, impact of what this budget will do. Um I know we all have important issues that we all care about, um that would be very helpful just for me. Just in conversation to say, here is what is different from one year to the next uh as you are paying more uh in property taxes and in pilot. Um thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you all, staff.
Commissioner Stikes.
I was just going to say that September fourteenth is our first uh meeting in uh September. And why I do have, like, I'm going to ask one other question because Commissioner Davis kind of reminded me of it. Um about the other taxing entities, right? Um the Community College, I mean, I, I'm hearing that just over and over and over, what about the Community College? What, they apparently have enough money to build a new location downtown, where's that money coming from? How are we subsidizing it? Are we in communication with the um, the other taxing entities as to? I know that we have asked, I have asked anyway, that we have a joint meeting so that we can um come at this collectively. Uh all of us together, what's your plan? What's the library's plan? What's our plan? What's uh uh everyone's plan, the seven uh entities that are uh responsible for our property taxes? And uh we haven't, we haven't been able to uh get that accomplished. But I would sure still like to see us be able to do that, it's probably too late for this year, but uh I would like to, I'd like to get that on the books so that we can uh look at this collectively. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. To answer that question, uh my office is facilitating that, it is planned, it is scheduled. Uh there is a date coming up with all the school districts, their CFOs, the superintendents and their board uh presidents, and it'll be a joint meeting that is planned uh, I believe for September. Give or take, but I'd have to get the exact date. That is coming, I can say that uh I know that this this whole talk about tax relief based on the demands of a lot of our residents, our property tax paying residents in Windite County, it's not going on deaf ears. I've listened in and observed some of the conversations of some of the other taxing entities, and they're paying attention. They know that our residents are demanding tax relief. And they know that we're still one of the poorest communities in the state of Kansas that has some of the most devastated and depressed zip codes, and that some people are being taxed into utter desperation. Some into poverty, some out of their houses, and some out of our county. And they are paying attention to that. In talking to the community college, it was presented last night at the Windite County Economic Development Corporation meeting. Dr. Moser, who was the president of the Kansas City Kansas Community College, did indicate that he will, presenting a budget that request to his Board of Trustees of the college that will include a one-mill reduction. So these other taxing entities are paying attention to our residents. I think that we often talk about we're only forty-six percent, but we're that forty-six percent that a lot of these taxing jurisdictions look to for leadership. They follow us, they follow our lead. And they really look to us to share with them on a broader note on what the community and what the public is saying as far as the needs when it comes to taxing and providing of good services and resources throughout Windite County and making sure that we do so equitably. And and I'm confident that they are listening, they are hearing, and and I'd like to say to the public looking forward, I know we we've talked a lot about bankruptcy, and we've talked a lot about the red and 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 these these hypothetical dates that are coming up based on the numbers that we have today. But I'm confident that, and I want this community to be confident that we have a, a county administrator, we have very professional staff here and employees. And they're going to work hard with this commission and more importantly, with this community to make sure, again, that we are fiscal responsible and that Windite County will never have a bankruptcy on its record, and I believe that to be so. And I also believe that the best is yet to come for Windite County. We've hit a speed bump. We're going to get through this. There's going to have to be some sacrifices made, both by employees as well as residents in this community because of our fiscal situation. I'm not so much concerned at how we got here. I'm more concerned about where we're going, and where we're going. The future is bright. So thank you, and I'll take a, a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez, I'm sorry.
Move to adjourn.
David's second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Clerk, roll call, please.
We'll call Markley.
Aye.
Stikes. Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Have a great evening.